Live 2160 at Facebook page YouTube and group. And then pretty soon here. We're gonna go live on the radio. Here we go. Quiet on. Ah, hey, it's six o'clock Tuesday evening here 2160 net. Of course, that music means it's time for Anything Goes with Bremer and Jones. She's Bremer. I'm Jones. Now, the lady in pink that you see, don't adjust your screens. You've probably seen this lady's signs all over as she is running for Alderwoman in Ward 1. None other than Think Big Go Local herself Bobby Bayney. Welcome Bobby.
Thank you, Kent.
Today, huge, huge show.
Huge show.
Now, the candidates that you cannot see right now, they will have to mute their phones. So we don't get that loop going. I'd love them for that. But we got District 15 Board of Education candidates and we're gonna be doing some chatting with them.
We are. We're gonna talk to them. We thought it was important. There's not really a forum right now to introduce the candidates and have the constituents understand what their stance is in the district. So we thought we'd put this together. And I think it's gonna be a really great opportunity. We'll go over the ground rules and we'll talk about how things will work. And then, as you can see, we just brought the candidates on. So let's go ahead and get started. Are we good?
Yes.
Are we good? Just you be quiet producer. Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and read from this and then it'll be less formal. So thank you for joining us this evening. We are excited to bring the School Board Candidate Forum to the community. 2160 net, Kent, Bobby and myself do not personally endorse any candidate for this upcoming election, but we wanted to help voters make informed choices and get to know their School Board candidates. Bobby and I will be the moderators and Kent will be the producer.
Excellent. Welcome candidates. Before we start opening statements, I would like to do a quick overview of the ground rules.
What is it?
We have feedback. We have feedback.
Alright.
Candidates will each have an opportunity to provide opening comments, answers to each of the questions and closing remarks. Candidates will have two minutes for their opening, two minutes per question, and one and a half minutes for their closing. Anything Goes with Bremer and Jones and myself Bobby Bayney from Think Big Go Local will be assisting with the timekeeping tonight. When there is 30 seconds and then 10 seconds left, a banner will be displayed on the screen. At this time, the candidates should wrap up their responses. Candidates will be interrupted and asked to stop speaking if they continue once their time is up.
As mentioned before, this session is intended to be informative for members of the community. Candidates should not use the speaking time to provide a rebuttal to another candidate's response or debate. The speaking order was determined beforehand for the statements and for the questions. Questions were sent in over the past week. Feel free to type any questions you have in the comment session. If we have time, we will ask some additional questions. At this time, we would like for the candidates to begin their opening statements and introduce themselves. And Bobby will call on you.
Alright, so we're gonna begin our opening statements. Our first candidate is Lindsay Morley. You've got two minutes, so go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lindsay Morley. I am a resident of McHenry for 15 years now. I live here with my husband and my two children, both of whom go to Edgebrook Elementary. And I am currently an Assistant Principal in Hartley School District, few cities south of here. And I wanted to just take a second and say thank you to 2160 net. This was much needed. Thank you Dawn, Kent and Bobby for having us all on so that we could talk to the community and let them know where we stand. I think this is a fantastic forum to be able to have everybody get to meet everybody on. And I guess as an Assistant Principal, I just wanted to say that my passion has always been putting students first. I live that every day and I want to be able to bring that passion to McHenry School District 15. So that is why I'm running and I hope to be able to serve my community and the students here for a long time to come.
Excellent. Thank you Lindsay. Our next candidate is Chad Mahavik. Chad, you've got two minutes. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you. And thanks for the forum. This is a good opportunity for everybody. My name is Chad Mahavik and my family, I have a wife and three kids. We live here in McHenry, of course. My three kids went through District 15 and my youngest just graduated last May. So we have a lot of experience in District 15. In fact, my wife and I both graduated from District 15 and she teaches at Hilltop School as a kindergarten teacher. I feel that my children received an excellent education in District 15. And I'm running because I want to help provide the best possible education for all students in the community so that they have the skills and the tools to succeed in high school and beyond. I really feel that strong schools make for a strong community and I just want to make McHenry a better and better place. I'm an attorney here in town. I've lived here most of my life. I've served in a variety of volunteer and leadership roles in the community, including as a board member of District 156 and the Board President of District 156. And I'm currently serving, my term is Alderman of Ward 5 for the City of McHenry. So I'm looking forward to tonight and talking about our visions for the district and thanks very much.
Excellent. Thank you Chad. Our next candidate to provide their opening statement is Patrick DeGeorge. Patrick, go ahead and introduce yourself. You've got two minutes.
Hi. First of all, as the other candidate said, I want to thank you guys for hosting this very much needed forum. My name is Patrick DeGeorge. My wife and I bought our home in McHenry back in 2012. And part of the driving force when we purchased our home was we were looking for something that was within commuting distance with a good school system. We were pleased with what we saw with District 15, which led to settling here. We now have two children that are both in District 15 schools. My oldest is at Parkland and my youngest is at Riverwood. My wife is also a teacher at Riverwood Elementary. Myself personally, I actually work for nearby Township High School District 211, where I am the District Public Relations Specialist. And I am retired from the Illinois National Guard. My life, my upbringing has always been about service to community and service to others. And so when I saw that there was a need for board members, I felt that this was kind of the next progression for me since my retirement to continue serving my community. And this has been stated to help make McHenry a stronger place simply based on a stronger education system.
Excellent. Thank you very much Patrick. Our next candidate to do their opening statement is Jennifer Sinick. Jennifer, you have two minutes. Please introduce yourself.
Hi there. I'm Jenny Sinick, but everybody always pronounces it Sinick. That's okay. We have lived in McHenry since 2001, my husband and my two children. I have a son that is at West Campus, District 156, and then I have a daughter that is in 6th grade at Parkland School. I have worked for the City of McHenry for 25 years this year as an emergency dispatcher. So before that, I worked for another municipality. So my entire adult life has been spent working in the community in which I have lived. The first police department I worked for was in Cary where I grew up. I feel very strongly and very passionately about serving the community. So right now, my role in the dispatch center is managing the 911 dispatchers and supporting them and giving them the tools that they need to provide the services that we do to 16 different police and fire departments. So I believe that my skill set in that would benefit the district. We have been blessed in District 15. My son and my daughter went to Valley View School. They have gotten an excellent education. A lot of friends and family are teachers and administrators, many of them in District 15. I have listened to them for many years, talk about the different challenges that they have faced, especially this last year. And so I felt it was a good time to serve the community in that way and support them, provide them the tools that they need. That's about it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. There is one additional candidate that will be on the ballot and unfortunately she was not able to be here today. Rachel McDonald sent in a statement and Dawn, can you read that?
Absolutely. Ms. Bremer, Ms. Bayney and Board of Education candidates, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give a statement this evening. Being an ER nurse, I am on shift tonight and deeply sorry I am unable to be there. As a District 15 parent, community member and former McHenry student myself, I have watched the interactions and decision making take place in the School Board with growing unease for the last few years. I am not the type to sit back and complain, but rather prefer to act in a proactive manner. I chose to run for the School Board because I believe we need a change for our future and I'm hopeful for the opportunity to help that change come to fruition. I know how hard the last year has been for all of our families, educators and community at large. I think it is time for us to continue to move forward in a productive manner that is best for our kids and for our community. I believe that I can be a strong voice for both those with school aged children and our community. I feel we have a lot of work to do to make our School Board a respected organization that is committed to supporting our future. I am a collaborative, open-minded and compassionate individual. I bring to the table the ability to hear multiple sides of an issue and be able to work through what will bring the most benefit to our students, staff and families, even when those are difficult decisions to have. I welcome anyone to reach out to me if you would like to learn more about who I am as a person, parent and community member. Thank you, Rachel McDonald.
Excellent. Okay, then we are gonna get to the question portion of this forum. And Chad, I'll let you know that you're gonna be the first one to answer this question. I will read the question and then we will give Chad one and a half minutes, no, two minutes to respond. The question is, District 15 is the highest taxing body on my tax bill, double of what District 156 is. Why is this and what will you do to keep this line item from increasing while maintaining a high level of education? Chad, you've got two minutes to respond.
Well, thank you for that question. You know, property taxes is always, you know, a very unpopular thing for everybody. Nobody likes to pay property taxes. District 15 has about twice the number of students that District 156 has or actually more than that. And so that's one reason why the property tax bill will be double. But let me go over a few facts. The reason that the property tax bill shows that District 15 is the highest taxing body is because something like 70% of the revenue that comes into the district comes from property taxes. And that's much different than it is in other taxing bodies. So for example, the City of McHenry receives about 20% of its revenue from property taxes. Most of the revenue comes from sales taxes and income taxes. So the main source of revenue for a school district comes from property taxes. So it's very difficult, when you look at that property tax bill and see that huge number, it looks like a lot. Of course, it is a lot. You're paying probably a similar amount to other taxing bodies is just shown through income taxes and sales taxes where you're not gonna see it as directly. So to get to the answer, I don't think it's possible right now to flatten the levy for District 15. Some taxing bodies are able to do that because they receive revenue from other sources. And so I think if property tax relief was going to come, the better way to do it would be to offer a rebate of taxes. If you flatten the levy, then you can't realize that increase ever again than from the lost revenue the next year. And so, you know, at this time, I don't think I would commit to reducing that number. We would need to make sure all things are taken care of for the district before we would be able to consider a rebate or a reduction in taxes.
Excellent. Patrick, you have two minutes to respond. Please let me know if you need me to repeat the question.
If you could, just the basic of the question, please.
Absolutely. District 15 is the highest taxing body on my tax bill, double of what District 156 is. Why is this and what will you do to keep this line item from increasing while maintaining a high level of education?
Okay, well, that is an excellent question. And as a property owner, as everybody here is, nobody wants to see their property taxes go up or be extensive in the realm of going to education or anywhere else. However, what people have to remember is the property taxes are an investment in the community itself. As I said in my opening statements, the school system is one of the building blocks of a stronger community. And honestly, by trying to hold that, you almost want to be cautious of having to reduce what we offer our students. And that's one thing we never want to see. So I would, I would like to see some, some, some strength with the budget while not overtaxing the people, but understanding that, that we do have needs that we need, bills we need to pay. And so I honestly think I would love to try to hold it firm, but at the same time, we have maintenance needs that are always gonna come up in the off chance or at times where we may have a budget surplus. That's something that we can hold in reserve for any emergency needs for the district. So as much as I would like to say, sure, I would love to hold your tax bill where it's at. Ultimately, we gotta make sure that we're seeing to the best needs of the students and sometimes that's gonna cost a little money.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Jennifer, if you could answer the same question, let me know if you need me to repeat it.
No, I don't, I don't think so. Definitely being around in a municipality, budget is always a hot topic. What can we do with the resources that we have? How can we stretch the dollar to go farther? I think what's important here, and I obviously read a lot of blogs, talk to a lot of different people. People are always talking about different sections of town and what they look like and can we get this business and can we get that business? Like Patrick had referenced, the school system and education is part of the building block of a community. And if you have a strong school district, people are going to want to live here. People are going to want to build houses here. They're going to want to bring their businesses here. Yet, we are shaping, the education system in the school district is responsible for shaping the future of this society. So with that is a huge responsibility and level of importance. So are there other sources of funding? You know, the state making, we can't control what the state does and the money and the funds that they provide and when they do that. But making sure that that is part of the funding source. Are there grants that can be obtained for some of the programs that the district might want to implement? Certainly, as some others have said, the same. Refunds, rebates to the taxpayers, those things are obviously important to people, but providing the services that the school does is probably more important, I would think.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We are gonna move on to our second question and Patrick, I'll let you know that you're going to be the first one we call on to respond.
Hey Bobby, I'd like to answer that question.
You wanna answer, you wanna answer that?
I would like to answer that question if you don't mind.
I was moving right on by you. Alright, Lindsay, I'm so very sorry. Do you need me to ask the question again?
Nope, I've got it. I've got it. We're good.
Anything goes Lindsay.
Well, at least I didn't get my mute button hit. As long as I can talk, we're good.
I'll give you five minutes.
Thank you. I, I want to echo, strong schools equal a strong community. We are, we are, we are educating the children to go into this community. And when we provide a strong education, people want to come here, just like Jen said. So one of the things that I think people need to understand is the fact that right now, the state is not paying their bill. The state is not feeding the money into the schools that the state is supposed to be feeding into us. I've heard percentages, I don't want to quote incorrectly, but I know it's not even 50% of what they're supposed to be paying the schools is coming from the state right now. So unfortunately, that burden falls on the property taxes. As Chad said, 70% comes from the property taxes. We need to make sure that we're fully funding our schools because what we pull away cannot affect what our students are getting out of our school system. I don't think there's any way any of us can say, yes, we're going to hold steady. Yes, we're gonna cut it because none of us are on the board yet. None of us have reviewed the budget. We don't know where the money is going. We don't know what they have in reserve. So I think that once we can get onto the board and see where the budget is at, see where the reserve lies and make sure that anything that we take away is not going to strictly affect students. I mean, I will always say students come first. So when we pull money away, we need to make sure that we know where we're pulling it away is not going to immediately affect our students. And not that I'm saying we should pull away money, but we definitely need to make sure that our students are coming first. And we have to fund that because that's where the burden's gonna lie until the state starts funding our schools.
Excellent. And my apologies again for just skipping right on over you. Okay, so the next question is going to go to Patrick first. Do you feel that the appointment of Josh Wrights to replace Alan Hoffman was premature? Do you feel that the board should have had an extensive search for the next superintendent? You have two minutes.
Okay. Well, and here's my thought on that. And seeing us obviously from working in another school district and we recently appointed a new superintendent within our district about a year ago. One of the nice things about bringing someone like Dr. Wrights from his current position and just basically moving him up the next level to the superintendent is you have that continuity of leadership. I think with, with Dr. Wrights having been in the position that he's been in and his past employment with District 15, he's worked his way up. He's seen how the district runs. He's got a good understanding. And to tie it back to the previous question, if you're gonna do an extensive search for a district, even a district the size of District 15, you're likely going to end up having to hire an outside agency to start sourcing these candidates, at which point now you're talking about spending additional money. So right now, I think when the position had opened up and Dr. Wrights was available, just maintaining that continuity and leadership, I mean, you're looking at, you've got schools like Parkland that had the number one STEM program. And the Educational Foundation that built that program and all the other additional great programs throughout District 15 are things that he helped to create and was there as part of the implementation. So to move him into, right up into the top position is just gonna hold onto that continuity. So I don't necessarily think it was a premature decision. I think it was actually a good decision to, to hold the, kind of hold the line where we're at and maintain our continuity of leadership.
Excellent. Thank you. Jennifer, the same question to you and you've got two minutes.
Okay, so first, for starters, no. I'll start out by saying no. I don't think it was premature. Going off of what Patrick said, it is a continuity of leadership. It would be similar to any other organization or agency. You have someone with experience in the role in which Dr. Wrights has been serving in under the tutelage and the leadership of Dr. Hoffman. Showing him the ropes, kind of grooming him for if someday this position becomes available, how then will you lead? In doing so, I mean, he's come from other school districts as well. He's had experience there and he's doing a great job here. I would think that, yes, if you're gonna do an outside extensive search, I have been part of those before for police chiefs and other things. Those do cost money. What would the taxpayer say about that when, if in the end, maybe Dr. Wrights would still be the best candidate for the position, even if they did go out? And then there would be, you know, why did we spend that money only to have the person that was inside and has intimate knowledge of how the district works be the one that was selected in the end? So I mean, outside of, that is strictly our opinion. I like to base things in fact. He's, he's obviously done a good job, what he's doing, and I hope he continues on that path.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And Lindsay, I'm gonna let you talk this time.
Thanks Bobby.
You're welcome.
I'm going to agree and I'm gonna say no. I do not think that it was a premature decision. I do not think that an extensive search was necessary when you have an internal candidate that has proven themselves to be smart, savvy and has the experience that is needed. I don't know why we would need to spend the money to do an external search. They are very expensive. And when we're talking about taxes and we're talking about where a district spends money, I don't believe it was necessary. I've had a conversation, a couple of conversations with Dr. Wrights and he, he has visions, he has plans, he has goals. And I do believe that while he has been in his position as Assistant Superintendent, he has taken all of the practice and all of the learning and all of the, all of the knowledge that he needs from Dr. Hoffman. And I believe that he is going to be the best candidate to step out and to continue to lead this, to continue to lead this district down the correct path and get us through this very, very difficult time that we are in right now. I don't believe that he is going to, I've heard people say ride Dr. Hoffman's coattails. I believe that he is very knowledgeable and I believe that he is going to do what's best. And I believe he's got some big plans and some big visions. So I am 100% on board with the new superintendent coming in from Dr. Hoffman.
Excellent. Thank you. And Chad, if you could answer that question as well?
Yeah, and I agree completely as well. And with everything that's already been said, I really can't add that bunch more. I mean, Dr. Wrights is the right person at the right time. He offers consistency and strong leadership. He's very child centered. There was no learning curve for him to come in and do the job well. You know, I've dealt with him on a number of occasions and a number of different contexts. He's always been great. He was my oldest principal at McHenry Middle School at that time and did a great job there. And he's done well in every role he's had. So I'm pleased that we were able to find a candidate like that internally and not have to go spend for some external firm needlessly. So I agree with what's been said by everybody here.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the third question. And Jennifer, I'm gonna ask you to answer it first. And I want to remind everybody that we did not write these questions, that these came in when we created the Facebook event. So question number three. The behavior and actions of the current board have been nothing short of embarrassing recently. What do you feel is the role of a responsible board member in regard to how one carries itself as a board member during the meeting and in public?
Oh, that's a loaded question. Okay, I would, I would agree to a certain extent with what I have witnessed most recently. That was part of, that was also part of why I wanted to run. Being part of a team, being part of a board requires communication, requires respect, requires the ability to agree to disagree. We may not always agree on everything, but if we can be willing to see a point of view that someone else may have, we can do that, but still do it in a respectful manner. I have been disappointed as that person posed the question with what's been done. And I think just this little amount of time we've spent here, almost 30 minutes, I think this group of people here, and I'm super sad that Rachel's not on it to interact with her as well because her two minute thing that you read, I would imagine she would be on the same page as the rest of us. It appears that we can all, we all have different jobs full-time outside of this volunteer position that we are electing or hoping to be elected to take on. We can all agree to disagree and make decisions that are best for everyone and not make the decision that we think is just what should happen for ourselves or for our own children. So did that answer the question?
Yes, I think it did. Excellent. Lindsay, let me know if you need me to repeat the question, but you've got two minutes to respond.
I don't think I need all two minutes. I'm just gonna say that I agree that I was, I have considered a board run for a while. It was a few years down the road for me. I wasn't quite there yet. But during this time and seeing the way things happen, I thought that I had things to offer. Professionalism and respect for other people is a huge deal. And when you are working as part of a team and you are representing a community and representing a school district, that's a big deal. I I it's very difficult. This is a loaded question. It is. I, yes, yes. All I can say is yes.
Who just want to reiterate again, these are not our questions. Just want to make that clear.
I thought we should lead in with that. Of course. Um, Chad, if you could answer and let me know if you need me to repeat it and you've got two minutes.
Well, I mean, I have to agree. I mean, none of us here are going to pass judgment on what other people are doing or or not doing, I don't think, but you know, the role of a board member is to be constructive and as Lindsay said, you know, professional and respectful. And you really have to look at it as a being a member of a team. Um, everybody is trying to do what's best for the students. And um, you know, everybody's got their role. Uh, the administration's got their role, the board has their role, teachers and staff have their role, uh, community stakeholders, but you know, the bedrock of making it work right is to do it in a constructive manner. And uh, you know, that's also one reason why I felt called to, you know, run for this position is to bring some of that experience to to that board. So that's how I feel about it.
Excellent. Thank you. And Patrick, if you could respond, please.
Absolutely. So I I absolutely agree uh, with with my colleagues here tonight. I understand that that this past year has been very trying, very stressful, uh, and nerves have been frayed by it. But at the end of the day, as these situations arise, the board is looked upon as the the professional collaboration that's going to make decisions that impact uh, the community, the school district, the surrounding area. And though we may never, we may not always completely agree on every point, even when we have those disagreements, those disagreements need to be had civilly. And as has been said here before, that was definitely a driving force when when I I saw some of the conduct. Uh, I I was a little broken hearted to see that that's the representation of my community. And and so again, felt compelled to to stand up and say, well, I I would like to see a little bit more professionalism, a little bit more civility in the board. And and I think that with uh, the four of us that are here tonight and again, uh, with Rachel who couldn't be, I think that we are a core group of people that could bring that civility and that uh, continuity uh, and that professionalism into the school board that needs to be there, especially now more than ever where board meetings are broadcast live, they're they're recorded, they're streamed. And and they will be reviewed and critiqued uh, for time to come. Uh, I I think based on that, there needs to be that strong front from the board, even as I said, even if we don't agree, uh, we need to be civil in our discussions.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Um, we're going to move on to question number four and Lindsay, I'm going to come to you first with this one. What do you envision for the district in regard to returning to normal in the fall?
Normal? Would that be old normal? Is that new normal? I think that we're on our way there. I truly do. Um, I think that the decision that was made at the last board meeting to bring our students back full time, all in, five days a week is a step in the correct direction. We don't know what new normal is going to look like. To be quite honest, none of us do. We have no way of knowing what it's going to look like next year. I know that whatever it looks like, moving forward, we have all seen what happens when we have to shut down. We have all seen the difficulties that come with um, having our students not in the physical school building. Some students succeed and some do not. We have seen and we have learned. And I think that that is key here. We have learned so much this past year. And no matter how much we want to look at it as a negative, I think there are positives that have come out of it. I think that our teachers have been pushed. I think our students have been pushed. But as far as returning to normal, we don't know what normal is going to look like, but I truly believe that we can continue to educate our students to the best of our ability. I want students in the building as safely as possible. Um, and I think that what is best for them and what is best for our community and what is best for our staff always needs to be taken into account. So we will move forward and we will continue trying to get back to that normal that we all want back.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, Chad, if you could respond, please.
Sure, just like Lindsay said, I mean, we're not going to know what new normal looks like, but you know, getting back five days a week is a step in the right direction and we certainly all hope that in the fall we can return that you know, this past year, the you know, faculty and staff really stepped up, I think, to operate under really difficult circumstances and you know, it has offered a new set of skills for the staff and and everyone really in terms of different ways to deliver um, instruction and um, you know, if we're forced to go into something else in the fall by circumstances, hopefully we'll be more prepared this time to meet that contingency. Um, but yeah, I mean, once we know the safe and responsible way to bring kids back in the fall, let's hope we can do that five days a week and do it right.
Thank you. Um, Patrick, if you could respond, please.
Absolutely. So the definition of normal over this past year has constantly been shifting. You know, as Lindsay said, there's always the new normal as we're moving. And to begin with, I think our our teachers, our administrators, our school nurses, our custodial staff have been doing wonderful jobs um, in whatever normal looks like at that moment to keep the students in some sort of a learning environment. And I think as we move forward into the fall and we are hopefully remaining in the now five days a week with all of our students that are willing to come in while monitoring whatever safety guidelines may be recommended, that we keep moving that forward to do we get back to the old normal where all the students are in class and we're back to what we looked like in 2019? I would love to say yes, but as I said, as the safety guidelines dictate, we need to make sure that as normal shifts, we shift with it. We keep that forward momentum. But at the same time, we take the lessons we've learned uh, from the pandemic from the last year and we don't lose sight of, well, if we have to take a half a step back, we've already got the pieces in place that as we take that half a step back if needs be, which I would hope we absolutely don't. Then we take those steps and we put them right back into place so that there's just a smooth transition back and forth as we go. And so through those transitions, I think it'll help us move a little faster to uh, getting back to what we used to know.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And Jennifer, if you could wrap it up, you've got two minutes.
Okay. I think the key word, like what everyone else has basically been saying is pivot. Um, and that's what we've had to do for the last year is pivot. Every time something some new recommendation comes out from the CDC or from the state, we've had to readjust. The administration and the teachers have done a remarkable job under the most stressful of circumstances in trying to still provide the most basic need of children, their education uh, in a different way. So is there is there a normal? I I I would say no. Because we have to keep pivoting and changing as things go along. I would love my children or super thrilled, both of them, to go back in the hybrid form. Just interacting with with kids their age again and being in that learning environment physically, meeting their teachers, seeing some teachers they've never met before in real life um, outside of a screen. So has have there been things that we have benefited from? Sure, we have found ways to um, make things more efficient. We've found ways to deliver instruction, like someone else had said, um, in ways that we never imagined before and and sparking creativity and all sorts of things that could be in the positive column of what this pandemic has taught us. I think that working together to come up with the safest plan is is what's best for everyone.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to question number five and Chad, I'm going to ask you to respond to this one first. What is the number one issue that you see that needs to be addressed in the district?
Well, the number one issue I think is dealing with the fallout from all this COVID stuff. I I think that it's created a real hardship for families, of course, and I think we're dealing with or going to be having to deal with gaps in student educational growth and achievement. So I think in some instances, some students have thrived this year actually with the hybrid model. Other students have been left far behind, you know, with attendance, with learning. You're going to have situations in a lot of instances where, for example, kindergarten student entering first grade will still be like a kindergartner in terms of not knowing classroom rules and not having the um, base level of knowledge. So there's a lot of gaps to have to fill. It's going to be critical for the district to create plans and programs to address these gaps. It's going to be important to work with all stakeholders, all the team members, um, meaning families and teachers and administration to get families back on track, um, back in school mode, you know, uh, the idea of getting ready for school, you know, being properly proper nutrition, having homework done, ready to learn. You know, that hasn't been done um, for a year and for some students not at all. So getting back in that mode, filling the learning gaps that are have been created, that's the number one priority uh, going forward from here. I mean, there are other priorities as well, but that would be the number one priority in my view.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, Patrick, if you could respond, please.
Yeah, so in a lot of respects, I I agree. The student wellness, student preparedness is definitely going to be a very high priority. And I think that's going to be in in classroom conduct, in educational standings, and also I think in providing transportation to our students. Right now, we're we're looking at some serious transportation issues within the district. Just today, I've been seeing where where parents are concerned that uh, the the pay bus route has been removed and now they're concerned with, they want their students to be back in class, but they don't know how to get them there. And I think part of building the stronger education for our students and getting filling that gap is to actually get them into the classroom and part of that is providing the transportation that was once there that needs to be back there to get them physically into the classroom.
Thank you very much. Um, Jennifer, if you could please respond.
This is amazing. Like, I feel like we're all, all we keep saying is, I agree, I agree. This is, this is fantastic. Um, so my number one thing for sure, um, kind of bouncing off of what Chad said, definitely supporting everyone in the process of getting back full time. You know that that's coming, like that day will come where we're all going to be back in school like we used to be five days a week. What it looks like, what the hours are, you know, remains to be seen, but that day is coming. So during the process of not being in school five days a week, parents having to work from home, parents who had jobs that they really couldn't work from home, and so maybe they lost their job. And and trying to do their job and school, uh, help educate their kids and do the schooling all at the same time has just brought about so much stress to to literally everyone. The teachers that have children at home that they have to go teach their students, but they still have their own kids at home that are trying to do school from home. I mean, there's so many different um, aspects of this that affect everybody. So supporting, like Chad said, all of the stakeholders in in what that's going to look like and the transition to get there. In addition to um, yes, the transportation, and I have heard that just today with the the pay bus being eliminated. I know that there was a um, a decision that was made with the bus drivers and some of the uh, support staff in the schools because nobody was actually in the building. That's a big deal too. That's a big issue and not having, do we not have enough bus drivers? We don't have enough drivers to drive the buses to get the kids to school. Um, so the number one obviously is supporting everybody and and in doing so, that that also includes transportation.
Thank you very much. And Lindsay, if you could answer this one now.
Can I ditto everybody?
If you would like to, you sure can.
I think everybody has valid points. The only thing that I would add to curriculum and academics and clo- and catching up and closing any learned loss is we need to remember the social emotional well being of our kids too. Trauma is a real thing and trauma has happened to our students. They were uprooted from everything they knew. On March 13th of last year, they walked out of a building and did not walk back into it. So I think that we need to remember the social emotional well being of our kids. You have to Maslow or you have to bloom before you can Maslow. Maslow before you can bloom, I messed it up. So it, we we have to meet those needs too. We have to remind them that they are loved and that they are wanted and that they have a place. And that it was scary. We understand it was scary. We need to talk about those feelings and talk about those fears. Um, and there is a way to do that and to weave in curriculum. 100% it can be done. So while we try to work to fill those gaps in curriculum and those gaps in learning that may or may not exist, we need to remember to feed emotionally into our students as well and our teachers, our staff because they went through trauma too and it has been a hard, hard year on everybody. And we need to remember that and we need to remember to give some grace. And remember to show kindness. It's all about kindness and unfortunately this past year, some that has been forgotten in some places. So I think that we need to come back to that. As well as transportation, I was very disappointed today in the number of calls and comments and text messages I received saying the pay rider system is gone, how am I going to get my kids to school? There has got to be a better way. Period. Our kids all deserve to go to school. Nobody is more important than anybody else.
Excellent. Thank you. Right on the money. She gets gets right there. All right. The next question, I'm going to shoot this one to you first, Patrick. In your opinion, what is the district doing that is remarkable compared to other similar districts?
Well, that's a, that's a very good question. You know, I think support of our teachers has has uh, definitely been strong within our district and and support for uh, our students in need. In in regards to, I I know there's, there's been no loss recently, especially since the hybrid of providing of finding ways to get meals to students. Because that is just as crucial as being in the classroom. Some of these students, uh, depending on their their economic status uh, within their homes, the school meal may be the only thing, the only time they see a meal a day. And so I think uh, District 15 has been great to see beyond the classroom for the for the well being of the students. And outside of COVID, I mean, as I said earlier, you know, our our STEM programs in at the middle school level with with Parkland being the the top STEM school last year and uh, MMS being I think it was number two the year before, I I think we're doing a a fantastic job of kind of engaging the newer technology with our students.
Thank you very much. Um, Jennifer, if you could respond.
What are they doing that's remarkable? Was that the word?
Correct.
Okay. I can only speak from experience with Valley View and Parkland and West Campus. Um, I can't speak for the other schools, knowing people in those schools that are teachers and and such, I guess I could for that, but the above and beyond that my children's teachers um, have done in in even before the pandemic. But to truly care about them as a whole human being, not just them as a student, them in their role in the rest of the world. How are they as a daughter? How are they as a son, a friend, a sister? Caring and supporting and educating the whole person, I think, is something that um, District 15 for sure has down pat. Um, the STEM and the STEAM obviously has been mentioned before. The sign hangs up on Parkland School. My daughter participated in Camp Invention for several summers at MMS. It was probably the highlight of her year, the years that she was able to participate. So I know that goes hand in hand. That's probably hands down. The the personal aspect, and I'm sure people would say that about other schools as well. And they they're doing a great job, not to take anything away from anybody else, but for sure, the teachers and the administrators and the human part of them is what makes this district remarkable.
Thank you very much. Um, Lindsay, if you could respond.
I am going to say the STEM and the STEAM that has come from District 15, those programs that they've developed have been outstanding. Um, I know that my daughter, unfortunately being home kindergartner for the year, hasn't gotten to experience that, but my second grader absolutely looks forward to his STEAM classes. Um, and I think that that is something that we are doing that is not just remarkable, but that is special. You don't see that around here. I've been in districts You don't see that around here. I've been in districts surrounding District 15 and you don't see what our district is doing as far as the, the engineering and the mathematics. And I, I got to take a tour over at District 156 and the new West Campus and meet with Dr. McTag over there and we are building the, we're giving the students a foundation to feed in to the amazing things that they are doing in 156. And I really think that we need to continue to feed into that STEM and STEAM program because that's our future. As with everything else, that is our future and our kids need to be exposed to that. So I think that that's super important and something remarkable that we're doing and it can only get stronger as we continue to build up and build that relationship.
Excellent. And Chad, if you could respond?
Sure. You know, when the students go to MMS, Dr. Glover has kind of his stock speech that he gives to the incoming sixth graders and their families. And he says, I can promise you that we're going to love your students. And it's true. And that's just like Jen was saying, we have teachers and administrators who love the students and dedication and to the students and the love for the students is, is remarkable. And, you know, I, I can't compare that to other districts as well, but I know we felt that for all three of our kids going through. You know, and, and then something else that I would mention specifically is and all three of our students as well, our kids went through the music program at MMS. And I, I'm convinced that we have the best music program in Northern Illinois, in, in McHenry Schools. Based on experience and just seeing other schools, we have the best program in, in all of Northern Illinois, I would say.
Excellent. Thank you. We have a little bit of time, so we're going to try to get to a question or two that came through the Facebook page today. So I'm going to send this one to you first, Jennifer. And the question is, how will you help support and improve the special needs programs in our schools?
That's a tough one. I would think, just like anything else, do your research, talk to the families, talk to them. What are their needs? What are their desires? What do they think is missing? What do they think is working? Talking to the administrators, talking to the, the teachers that are providing that instruction. I'm a very facts-driven person. And assessing what's working and what isn't, and then eliminate what isn't working. I don't, I don't have much experience, I'll be honest. I don't have a special needs child. I have friends that do and, and have witnessed some of the struggles that they have had with IEPs and, and working with school districts. I would have to learn more. I would have to do more research in finding out what are the, what are the specific needs and addressing them from there.
Excellent. Thank you. Lindsay, if you could respond to that question?
Absolutely. I actually am experiencing this right now. My student, my second grader is at Edgebrook with an IEP. We have been with an IEP for one year now. And I think that I would want to talk to more families as well. Jen, you only get information if you ask for it and you need to get all the information in order to make decisions. I wouldn't just talk to families. I'd want to talk to the older students. I think students can give us some good insight when we ask the right questions, phrase the right way. So families, students, staff, we need to get all stakeholders involved. And maybe we need to look if it seems to be a problem, if it seems that there are some things that could be fixed. Then we take all the information, we ask some questions, we gather the data, we put it together and we make some recommendations. I have experienced only fantastic things, but like I said, I'm, I'm only one. There, this is a massive district. And I think that if we have things that we want to look into, we need to ask the right questions and include all stakeholders in the decision-making process. So let's talk about it. Let's have a conversation and let's see what we can do to help make McHenry even better.
Excellent. Thank you. And Chad, if you could respond?
And I have to agree. I mean, we need more information and we need to talk to the stakeholders to find out what's going on. I mean, another thing we can do is to, this is the type of thing that a constructive board works with the administration on in terms of directing the administration to, that this is a concern by stakeholders, parents in the community, and that's something that we view as a priority. And so the administration would then also have to treat that as a priority and come back to us with more information. And you just put it to the top of the agenda as something that's important and you work with it based on facts and the information you can gather. I would say one thing that we could implement or should implement is pre-kindergarten screening for all students coming in so that we can help those students as early as possible, incoming, incoming students. So, I mean, that's one thing that could be done across the board. But I think we do need more information and then, and then address it as a priority.
Thank you. And Patrick?
And, and as has been said so many times tonight, I, I, I agree with everybody sitting here. Community outreach is, is huge. I, I think we as, as hopeful board members, when we, when we reach out to the community, we've got to be active in those meetings alongside our, our administration. You know, we need to show a solidified front with the administration and the board, stressing the importance of, of seeing to the needs of our special needs students. I've seen in, in small districts where special needs can tend to fall by the wayside. I think that's a, that's a terrible thing. I, I think finding ways to increase their interaction, any special needs student depending, getting inter, interaction amongst every student, whether it be a special needs student or any other student in the school. Partnership programs for, for certain students that, that may rely on that, that need for assistance can, I've seen can go a long way. I, I know that where I currently work, the, for our, our special needs students with multiple challenges, there are adaptive programs that they have researched and put into place that has, have really helped change the lives of some of those students. So, but again, building on community outreach, seeing what is needed in the district, what we can get for feedback from the community for what they'd like to see, and then building and implementing programs to bring all the students together.
Thank you very much. We have another question that came from someone viewing live right now and posted this in the comments. And Lindsay, I'm going to come to you with this one to answer first. How do you feel about the current board president agreeing to modifications of the district's collaborative bargaining agreements without input from the board?
Wow. Thanks for coming to me first on this one. I so appreciate it.
What you did for since I ignored you before.
Just say that you agree with everybody.
Oh my word. I wasn't there. I, I'm gonna, I'm going to just take the position that I only saw what everybody else saw in the public. I wasn't there. I don't know what happened. And I am not the type that is going to pass judgment without the, all the information. And I don't think anybody has all the information on this. We all saw what we all saw. We all heard what we all heard. But we are, weren't part of it and I am not going to pass judgment on anybody and say anybody was wrong or anybody's right because I don't have all the facts.
Fair enough. Chad?
Yeah, I was going to say the exact same thing. I mean, we don't have all the facts and so it's not fair to, to have an opinion one way or the other on it when we don't know everything here. So.
Excellent. Patrick, do you have an opinion on this one?
I have an opinion to say that I don't have an opinion. Again, it's, you know, it, we don't know what was discussed. I, I know the, the president said he spoke with, with the, the, the legal counsel for the, for the board. But obviously we don't know what, what the nature of that discussion was. So we really can't sit here and say he was absolutely right or he was absolutely wrong. And honestly, I think that's a discussion that if other board members have concern about that, that should definitely be, and I may be mistaken, but if that's a contract issue, that's something that should be discussed out of the public view as it is getting into details of the contracts.
Thank you very much. And Jennifer, if you would like to weigh in on this one?
Oh, here we are again. We're all going to agree. I, I truly believe and always have, there's three sides to every story, you know, there's the two sides and then somewhere in the middle lies the truth. We have no one, quite frankly, especially us, has any business making a, making a judgment, passing judgment on something that was done. We don't know the facts. All we know is what we saw that was streamed, you know, at the board meeting. I'm not going to question somebody's decision-making or how they chose to do something. So that's my opinion.
All right. Thank you. We've got another question that came from the comments and I am going to go to you first with this one, Chad. How will you work with the teachers' union to see are teachers' concerns heard and needs met?
That goes back to having an open dialogue and open communication. You know, transparency is critical and people talk about that term a lot, but what does that really mean? I think it means dialogue. And you have to have a dialogue, open communication between the board and the administration, the administration and the faculty and staff, and between board and faculty and staff. And all of those stakeholders need to have open communication with the community. That's the only healthy way to go. And so, you know, you, you've got to hear concerns, you know, but you've got to know your role as well as a Board of Education. Your, your role is not to administrate. Your role is to oversee the administration. And so you've got to be careful not to micromanage as a board member. But as legitimate concerns are brought up, the board should discuss and set appropriate policy. And then the role of the administration is to carry out that policy. And so having that open dialogue between all those stakeholders should lead to the best result for everybody and meaning, you know, the best interest of the students. That process, like I said, starts with transparency and open communication. So it's got to be an open line of communication.
Thank you. And Patrick, if you could respond?
I, I, I think we're finding ourselves in agreeance again. Communication is absolutely key. Teachers will always have, have concerns that need to be addressed. Teachers' Union is, I believe, the conduit for those teacher concerns to come to the board and to come to the administration. And by having that sort of free-flowing communication, we can hear, we can assess and we can address. And, and through that three-step process, I think we can see to, are, are we going to be able to fix every single concern of every single teacher every single time? I, I don't think that's feasible, but are we going to address large concerns that, that have deep impacts on our students through that open communication, that assessment and that addressing? Yes, I think we can.
Thank you very much. And Jennifer?
For sure, communication is the key. I have been on the, you know, on the other side of bargaining contracts in the past. I for sure would, at the time and would still want, somebody that understands the nuances of the job that I am being expected to perform and the position that I am to uphold. So certainly, we're not going to be able to talk to every single teacher, but the administrators of the teachers in their respective schools are the ones that can communicate to us, whether that's either directly or through Dr. Wright's, to tell us, these are the needs of our staff, all of the staff. What can we do to provide them the tools in which they need in a manner that it is mindful of the taxpayers, the students and the teachers and the staff themselves? So I, I think that answers the question for sure. Communication is obviously where I have spent my entire life. But that is, it literally is the key to, to everything and, and the open dialogue.
Thank you. And Lindsay?
So I think this is where I offer a special viewpoint because I've been a teacher. I've been a member of the union and I've been, I'm currently in an administrative position. So I think that, like Jen said, knowing the point of view of the, where people are coming from and the information that they're bringing to the table and the needs and the wants and the concerns that they're bringing to the table is so important. I'm a communications person. I'm a relationship person. I, my passion is building relationships with people. It's why I do what I do and that's why I, who I am at my core. So I think it's all about that open communication, taking time to listen and understand, not, not being close-minded and having an open mind and listening to what people have to say. And not being afraid to ask questions and gain information. It's all about communication. It's all about empathy and making sure that you understand where people are coming from and making sure that, again, all stakeholders are involved in decisions that are being made and that all representatives are at the table.
Excellent. Thank you. We've got another question from the comments and I'm going to come to you first, Patrick. What is your stance on keeping kids in school during COVID? If it gets worse, will you still push for in-person learning, especially for IEP and special needs kids?
Well, and, and, and that's a, that's a very complex, very complicated and very important question that we're facing right now. I would love to say, hey, let's, let's keep our kids in school. Let's, let's keep moving forward. But at the same time, health and safety of our students is, is just as paramount as their education. I, I, I'm glad that my, my children are going back to school. I'm glad that my wife gets to see her students five days a week right now. And I'm glad that there's this, the rollout of the vaccine in, in the, the the district administration and everybody did a wonderful job making sure that our teachers were vaccinated so they could stay in the classroom and have less threats facing them from this. If it gets just, if it starts getting really bad again, if we start seeing a dramatic increase in cases, then we would have to take into consideration the recommendations of the, the McHenry County Health Department, the Illinois Department of Public Health. And see, and, and the, the Centers for Disease Control and see what their recommendations are. And, and I think through the, the advice of more knowledgeable people when it comes to viruses and pandemics, we can let that guide our decision. I, I would love to keep our students in class. I would love to continue building back into a normal education. But again, we just got to make sure that our students are safe.
Thank you very much. Jennifer, if you could share your thoughts?
Can you just ask, can you just ask the question?
Absolutely. What is your stance on keeping kids in school during COVID? If it gets worse, will you still push for in-person learning, especially for IEP and special needs kids?
Okay. So I'm a big proponent, obviously, of getting the kids back to school, for my own especially. You know, that's what I know. What do I know about, you know, all of our other friends and family and, and wanting to get their kids back in school? But at the end of the day, what we want and what is best might be two different things. Are the special needs and the IEP students important? Hands down, for sure. The different therapies and the different instructions and all of that is definitely more important than, say, the typical student going through their daily school day. Like Patrick said, there are people that are smarter than school boards and smarter than teachers that have science degrees and know about viruses and, and can provide guidance. I, I for sure would have to say the safety and the health is, is most important while still balancing the importance of mental health, like we've talked about already. That is a huge thing that we are going to not see the true ramification of for many more years. But what is my stance? I'm all for it if it can be done safely.
Excellent. Thank you. And Lindsay, if you could respond?
Safety is number one, always and forever. We have to be able to make sure that anything we do is done safely. But I was just as excited as everybody else was last time we watched that board meeting and we voted to get our kids back in school five days a week, all day. We had a big old celebration at the Morley House. Because my kids are thrilled. And as I've mentioned, my son has an IEP. I've seen what this last year has done to his education. And I can't sit here and say that my son's education is any more important than anybody else's. But I will sit here and say that we need our kids in school safely as much as possible. If I, I, they need to be there. This, that's where they belong. That's where they do their best work and that's where they get what they need, not just curriculum, but socially and emotionally. It's, it's a whole child thing, like Jen mentioned a few questions ago. It's, it's a whole child thing, like Jen mentioned a few questions ago. So do I want our kids back in school? 100%. Do we need to do it safely and listen to the science and follow the recommendations that IDPH gives us? 100%. But I can't possibly say that anybody's student is more important than anybody else's. It's important for everybody to be in school.
Thank you very much. And Chad, if you could respond?
Yeah. And there's really nothing to add. I mean, there's no substitute for in-person learning. There's just not. And, you know, going back is, is excellent. But yeah, we have to follow the health and safety guidelines and do everything in a responsible manner. And so we have to follow the guidelines from the experts. And so if things get worse, we have to follow the guidance of the experts and take it from there. Nobody can forecast that. So I agree with everyone else.
All right. Thank you. We've got another question and I'm going to bring this one to you, Jennifer, first. Pre-COVID, transportation always has a hard time keeping drivers. They are undervalued employees of our district. How can the board help improve the Transportation Department if elected?
Oh my gosh, another loaded question. Yes, I would agree. They are an undervalued, or the perception is they're an undervalued aspect. But they are the most, I mean, okay, I'm not going to say the most important. I shouldn't say that. Vital. They are transporting our most precious people. They're transporting our humans every day to and from school, the safety on the roads. I would have to, I don't have, I don't have like a straight answer for that right now. I would have to think. There has to be, you know, you see the school buses that are outside, going down 120 outside the transportation office. You see them at, at Ringwood and 120, trying to get drivers and attract people to do that. It's a very important job. Have they been neglected? Probably. And certainly, we, the decision was made to lay a bunch of them off when people, when students weren't in the buildings and that has affected us. So what can we do now to get that back on track? I would have to look into some creative ideas and work collaboratively as to, how do we attract people to do that job? Because it is of the utmost importance.
All right. Thank you. And Lindsay, if you could share your thoughts?
I was biting at the bit to talk about this one, Bobby. I sat down with two bus drivers a week and a half ago and I listened to them tell me that our starting drivers make $14.14 an hour. Would you drive a bus for that much money? Because I know, I, I don't think you're going to find anybody. Surrounding districts pay at least $17 starting. That's a huge problem. I am 100% with Jen. They do not get the credit or the respect that they deserve. Our bus drivers, we couldn't put our kids into schools without them. They deserve respect and they deserve fair pay. And right now, we're having problems finding them because of the fact that we are not paying them fairly. And I will come right out and say that they are not getting the money they deserve. These two drivers that I spoke to, one of them was offered a job in Crystal Lake. And the reason that they didn't take that job in Crystal Lake is because they are committed to driving for McHenry. And thank God that they are committed to driving for McHenry because where would we be? We are having a massive problem with transportation in this district and it's because they don't get the respect that they deserve. I could go on and on and on. I'm going to stop right there and say they need to make some more money and we need to treat them with respect and that means a whole lot more. So one of the things that I think that our district should do immediately when we seat this new board is we need to talk to transportation. We need to bring transportation in and we need to have an open discussion about their concerns because I'm telling you, they have a lot of concerns and those concerns need to be taken to the table and we need to make some changes. They deserve that respect.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And Chad?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely critical job, obviously, and one that doesn't get enough respect and one that we don't get enough applicants for. It's a tough job. And we have to pay comparably to what other districts are paying. It's, it's no mystery why we wouldn't get enough drivers if we're not paying comparably. And so that's something we need to look at. If we have a shortage, that's unacceptable and that's got to be a priority to figure out how to fill that gap. And if it means regrouping contract and looking at pay, then that's what we have to do. So we're paying comparably to other districts.
Thank you very much. And Patrick?
And God help me if I don't answer good on this, being the son of a now retired school bus driver. School bus drivers are, are crucial and the fact of the matter is, I mean, I've seen firsthand for years, the dedication that bus drivers put in, getting there so early in the morning in the cold winter days, getting their buses warmed up, getting, making sure that the students aren't getting on an ice cold bus when they're getting ready to go to school. You know, making sure that their bus is operating safely through those pre-checks. I mean, they're, they're just as important, I think, as, as any other member of the district. And, and this district hires so, or employs so many people and is such a crucial part of that community that we need to have that competitive pay. Because on top of providing for our bus drivers and seeing their needs and seeing that their financial needs are met through that competitive pay, that's again, building our stronger community because people in this community that qualify as bus drivers will want to stay in this community and drive in this community and it'll keep people in this community. So I, I think, as, as everybody has already said, there is a shortage. And I was, I was a little disheartened to see when the board decided to lay off so many of the bus drivers earlier in the school year. Because when there's that lack of job security, that's not going to be, be very inspiring for people to stay with us or to come to us. So we need to build the competitive pay. We need to ensure some form of job security. And we need, need to make sure that they're seen as just as equal as every other member of the district.
Thank you very much. We are going to move to our last question and then we'll move to our closing remarks. So I am going to let you answer this one first, Lindsay. Many of you said watching everything play out over this past year made it evident that you wanted to run. What was the driving force?
The driving force is my background and my knowledge and my skillset. Serving in this role is a perfect match. I believe that my skillset and my knowledge offer, I'm sorry, my five-year-old just popped into my room. I'm not sure what she's doing. Please hold. Okay. Sorry about that. I think we're good now. See, this is, this is being a mom. This is how things work. So as I was saying before I was interrupted.
Right. You get an extra five seconds because she forgot you. We owe you one.
This is where my passion lies. My passion lies in education. And I work full-time. I can't be that room mom. I work full-time. I can't do the parties. I can't do the field trips. So this is my way to serve. This is my way to offer my skill and my passion to the district that I'm choosing to put my kids in. And I know this is a great district and I know we can do a lot moving forward. So this is what I have to offer and this is what I want to do to volunteer my time.
Thank you very much. Chad?
Well, for me, the driving force is really the good education that our three kids got going through District 15. And I really care about the district and saw that this is a good place to make a real difference for the strength of the community because, again, good schools means strong community. And, you know, I've got experience in, in having served on District 156's board. And, you know, you can make a big difference in that role and it seemed like something that was needed for this board. And when I had heard that, you know, not all the incumbents were going to run again, I thought that was a good opportunity to, there was a sign to step up and, and do it. For me, that was the driving force.
Thank you. Patrick, what was your driving force?
Well, a, a big part of my driving force was in being a, a support staff member in another school district. I know, obviously, teachers are crucial. Our support staff is just as crucial. And between that and the background in communications, as far as, not the same as Jen by any stretch, but as in public relations and, and addressing the community, I saw that as maybe something that, that I think this board could do better. And I could bring that experience from that communications background, from that public relations background to help better express the decisions of the board in a manner that would be easy for the community to understand and maybe elate some of the fears or concerns of the community, the taxpayer, when they, when they have a full understanding of the decisions, the decisions that were made and why they were made. And on top of that, just a background in services, I said, you know, 22 years in the Army, raised by a retired police officer and a school bus driver, just built that, that, that need to serve the community, to serve others. And since retiring, you know, there's, there's still that drive that I have that I want to serve my community. I want to help others and I think that this was my best next step to do that.
Thank you very much. And Jennifer?
Driving force, I would, I would definitely say, I have been serving in this community for the last 25 years. This is just a different way of doing it. And this is taking the knowledge, taking the experience that I have in my current role, but then using that kind of as a springboard, talking to the teachers and administrators that are friends of mine. What can I do? I've done this part over here in the community. Now what can I bring to the table over here to help them? They are doing a very important job in providing the education foundation for all of our children. And what can we do to support them? So that, that probably was the driving force. And then the second one would be working together as a team. And I didn't, I didn't see a whole lot of that on a consistent basis. And I know that that's my passion. And it would appear from all of the interaction and the comments that we have here that all of us kind of are on the same page there as far as working together as a team, being effective, and being a cohesive unit.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That's the end of the questions that we are going to ask this evening. So we're going to move into our closing remarks. And Jennifer, get a drink of water because I'm going to come right back to you first. Just a reminder that everybody's got a minute and a half to just share your closing thoughts and then we will call this a wrap. Jennifer, you're first.
Closing remarks. Well, I feel like we have said everything. I don't know what I could possibly say more than I've already said. I would be ridiculously thrilled and excited to serve my community in this way. I, I feel that I bring value and, and experience and skill to the table. I am not an educator. I don't have that. But I do have the passion and the knowledge for communication. And like we've said, that is the foundation of so many things in life. I'm a mom of kids that have been in this district, but I'm just, I'm a mom and a wife. And working hard for the people in this community is something that I've been doing and would love to continue to do in this role. So sure, it'd be great if you'd vote for me. I mean, I'll, I'll vote for, I'll vote for everybody if I could.
Thank you so much. Lindsay, if you would share your final thoughts?
All I know is that this has been fantastic for this community. So I'm going to say thank you again because this is amazing. The fact that you have given the community this gift to be able to hear from all of us when they wouldn't have otherwise had this is a stroke of genius. I love it. When you saw me looking down, I was actually looking at the feed, scrolling through the questions that people were asking. So I didn't want anybody to think I was bored. I just, I love this. I love to be able to talk about this. I love to be able to offer viewpoints. And I truly think that this is a great group of people. I couldn't, I couldn't possibly tell you how to narrow this down. I know Rachel McDonald as well. So I, I just thank you for doing this. That would be my pleasure and my honor to be able to sit on that board. As I said at the beginning, it's been a goal of mine for quite some time. And I think that I've got the skillset opposite Jen. I have a different skillset to offer and it takes all kinds to be able to make a cohesive teamwork. So that, that's what I've got. I'm a relationship builder. I, I collaborate. It's my job every single day and it would be my honor to be able to serve on this board as well.
Thank you so much, Lindsay. And Chad, if you could share your thoughts?
Yeah. And I'd like to also thank you for hosting this. And, you know, it was really nice to have a conversation with the other candidates. I mean, it's nice to have a constructive conversation and I think it shows that, you know, that's how a Board of Education ought to operate. You know, it would be an honor to serve in, on District 15. And I think I would serve in a fair and honest manner, be a constructive team member, listen to and communicate with all the stakeholders, families, administration, teachers and staff, community members. I've got experience, you know, doing those things in different capacities on 156 and the city of McHenry. And it'd just be an honor to serve. And, you know, I, I think everybody here all agrees that all the students in our community deserve and should receive an equal access to quality education. And that's something District 15's been good at doing. It's something we can ensure they continue to do and improve on. And, you know, we'll make decisions that are in the best interest of the students. And I would look forward to serving in that capacity. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad. And Patrick, if you could wrap it up with your final thoughts?
Well, I get the last word.
Hell, you know. I've got more to say.
It's strange in my house to get the last word. Look, as everybody watching and everybody who will watch has seen, I mean, there are some fantastic candidates right now for this district. I, I think the Board of Education, regardless of how the people vote in April or those that may be early voting, this district Board of Education is in some great hands. Now, why do I want to be on it? Well, because I have that drive to serve. I have from a very early age. And with my wife being a teacher in the school, I see the stress firsthand from her when she comes home at the end of the day. This year has been rough. And, and it has taken a toll on our teachers and it has taken a toll on our students. I've seen it in my children's eyes when they end their school day. And as we progressively move forward to getting back into school, you see some of the light coming back in there. But I, I think, I, I want to, to build on that, to build on the momentum that is this great district. And, and as much as we've agreed with each other tonight, I, I can guarantee you there's probably going to be something that we won't always agree on. But I think we can have disagreements civilly and professionally. And I think with this group of people, that's, that's the direction to go. So I would really love to, to sit as a member of the board and I would be honored to do so.
Thank you very much. And before I hand this back over to Dawn, I just want to say what a pleasure it's been to moderate tonight. This is tough decisions for everybody to make. The feedback in the comments has been so positive and we're so grateful to have such amazing community members step up during this election.
Well, I agree. And so this would conclude our candidate forum. Thank you to our candidates for participating. I want to remind everybody that Election Day is Tuesday, April 6th and early voting has already started. If you have any questions regarding voting, please contact the McHenry County Clerk's Office. And I want to say personally, as a school board member of District 156, I look forward to working with all of you who get elected in this election and, and work for a better community and, and better engagement. Kent, do you have anything to say?
Yeah. First of all, great job to all the candidates. Absolutely fantastic. And you know what? For this community, 2160 net, right here, out of the Tanyan Building, over 2 million listeners, we don't do politics, right? We don't do news, all good stuff, positive stuff, great music, great shows, like anything goes with Bremarin Jones. And you guys leading the charge, being elected to the school board, forming the, the minds and dreams of the kids and the teachers that'll be, that'll be leading them. It's a, it's a big task. I, I wish you all the best luck. And, and now that you've been caught in the net, feel free to stop by anytime.
And I think we talked about our April 6th, which is a Tuesday, hosting and anything goes with. Goes with Bremer &amp; Jones live election return. Did we talk about that?
Guess we are right now. Nothing like a little planning, nothing like a little planning right here on radio. Of course, and of course, you know, we, a big shout out again. You've seen her signs all over, you know, she's running for Ward, One Older Woman. Bobby, great job tonight. Thank you so much for coming and doing this. I know you're very busy, but I really, really appreciate you. You did awesome.
All right. Well, I guess that's it for us, Anything Goes with Bremer &amp; Jones. Good luck to you guys. We really do thank you for taking the time and coming in and giving yourselves a voice in our show. We appreciate this. Take care, everybody.
Oh, I'm not going to be here next week. I'll be in Florida.